Hafthing, good afternoon, everybody. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judications will not come to order. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on Thursday, July 27th, with a second notice provided on Tuesday, August 1st. Notice of this hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. Today, we have one bill on the agenda, and it is proposed, proposed, substitute bill, 22-34COR, Committee on Rules by Requesting Maga Laing Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act, an act making appropriations for the operations of the executive, legislative, and judicial branches of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30, 2018, and for fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous and administrative provisions. I know that many are wondering why this hearing was called. Under the 34th Guam Legislature Standing Rules, Section 604(c)(3), a secondary hearing may be required for substantively amended or substituted bills. This hearing ensures that agencies are given the opportunities to submit testimony on the biennial proposal. And there has been quite a number of inquiries as to why are we implementing a biennial budget. This decades-old problem cannot be solved, I mean, the budget problem can't be solved in a single year. In 2011, Governor Calvo submitted a two-year proposal to, as he put it, afford this government the opportunity to plan. This budget agrees with the governor that the longer-term view of the government's fiscal realities is necessary. We all need to pitch in to ensure that we sustain our operations with available revenue, which is why I proposed that status quo budget for nearly all the agencies. What exactly does the biennial budget do? It reduces, in this one, we reduce the proposed general fund expenses by at least $34 million in FY18, and further limit budget growth in FY2019. Many of you have been with us for many budget proposals in the past, and we hope to remove gubernatorial politics from the 2019 budget process. Many of you were around when in the 2014 budget, we had to add vacancy pools and other things to address, things that were being pushed for campaign purposes. And it'll give the government agencies the ability to refocus government efforts on achievements rather than budget battles. All of you, I can see all the department and agencies, spend every day from October 1st through January 30th preparing the executive budget request, and then preparing for the hearings after that. So, we thought that that time would better be spent in monitoring and achieving the goals that your agencies have, were meant to, and were established for. What does this mean for the agencies? It ensures that all agencies can cover current personnel and operations. It maintains flexibility with a lump-sum budget, plus the governor's 15% transfer authority, and gives agencies the ability to know what the FY19 budget landscape is beforehand. What does, this does not preclude the adoption of future amendments, the execution and adoption of a supplemental budget when appropriate, or the need for the legislature to actively monitor GovGuam expenses and revenues. As a final note, if additional revenue comes in, and we are incorrect in our budget projection, it can be appropriated at that time, but right now, we think it's better to be fiscally conservative, as one of my staff has put it, under-project and over-prom, I mean, don't over-promise, and I, oh, I missed that all up, never mind.
That's okay. We, we know what it was, anyway.
So, let's proceed. Congressman President Underwood? Mr. Hattori? They knew to leave you the center seat. Maybe if everybody's okay, we'll let the boss speak first. In the, in the old days, before WhatsApp, the way that they used to control the budget hearings was the analysts would sit in the back with their electric buzzer. But now, I noticed that the WhatsApp, the phone keeps jumping, and... So, Mr. Carlson, if you're here for the administration, why don't we hear from you first?
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, and members of the 34th Guam Legislature, members of the Committee on Appropriations. My name is Lester Carlson, Acting Director of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, and I'd like to start off with an overview of the written testimony that I provided. Hafide, Speaker Cruz, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the substitute bill today. I'll dispense with the title, as the speaker has already recited it. The Bureau of Budget and Management Research recognizes and applauds your continued conservatism and fiscal responsibility in both the preparation and presentation of the substitute bill before us today. The Bureau would also like to thank and acknowledge the efforts of the Office of Finance and Budget in the preparation of the substitute bill. Mr. Speaker, the Bureau shares your optimism for Guam's continued economic growth, as evidenced by the projection of increased general fund revenues in fiscal 18 contained in substitute bill number 22-34. We believe that there's certainly room for discussion, agreement, and improvements to the general fund revenue estimates contained in substitute bill number 22-34, which will provide the necessary resources to fund continued improvements in public health, safety, and education. We hope that today's public hearing is the beginning of a dialogue between all stakeholders involved. We are committed to working with your committee and the Office of Finance and Budget to fashion a budget we can all agree funds necessary government services. Over the past week, from the time your committee's proposal was released, we have undertaken efforts to review the substitute bill. We would like to approach this two-year budgeting process proposal sequentially, beginning with obtaining consensus with the establishment of the appropriate funding levels for fiscal 18 before we forge into fiscal 19. In this regard, we would like to provide our initial comments relating to the bill as compared with the executive budget request submitted to the legislature in January of this year. I'd like to begin with just some brief comments on the revenues, and then move on to appropriations. As far as revenues are concerned, again, I'd like to reiterate the fact that we believe an upward adjustment in the general fund revenues contained in the substitute bill is warranted, and would like to begin discussions to address this matter in the days to come with yourself, members of the legislature, and your committee. The substitute bill proposes to adopt a Section 2718 revenue level of $5.2 million in fiscal 18, and we'd like to point out for the record that in this current fiscal year, the amount of $5 million was appropriated. However, actual revenue collections are only $1 million as of July in 2017. The substitute bill also makes additional appropriations of approximately $5.8 million from seven special revenue funds, including the Banking and Insurance Enforcement Fund, Health Professional Licensing Office Revolving Fund, Office of Vital Statistics Revolving Fund, Pesticide Management Fund, Police Patrol and Equipment Revolving Fund, the Recycling Revolving Fund, and a Limited Gaming Fund. We would like to note for the record that these funds are currently continuously appropriated to specific activities, and that the appropriation of these funds is unprecedented in recent years. I've been made aware very recently, after discussing some of the further details with other department agency heads and my staff, that there may be some changes to some of the areas in which these revolving funds may be focused on. I think you're going to be hearing more of those comments, as I will deem everything that we're providing here today as comments, from other agency heads that are here today. As far as appropriations, we have several comments to make. For the Department of Education, we note that there was a lack of funding for the principals' fund of about $1 million. We note that for the University of Guam, with the existing USDA loan, that the current agreement with the USDA is for a half a million dollars to be appropriated to the capital improvement fund from the Guam Highway Fund, and we note that there's a difference in the funding source. And again, the comment really is that that might be okay, but I think we certainly need to get USDA's consensus. After all, there is a contractual arrangement in place. Public health, the substitute bill proposes to cut approximately $1 million in healthy future funds that were identified in the governor's executive budget bill to fund 23 vacant funded positions in various program sections of the Division of Public Health, and for the purchase of medical supplies. Chief Cruz is sitting to my left, so I would be remiss if I did not note that the analysis that we provided, that we obtained, shows a reduction in $2.5 million for the Guam Police Department in fiscal 18, and we think that that will result in inability to fund uniform and non-uniform vacancies, and 33 police officer trainees. We'd also like to note that we believe that, as written, the substitute bill authorized the governor to use transfer authority of up to $1.7 million to fund the next police cycle, which, with all due respect, is not an appropriation, it's just giving the governor the ability to pull from other sources. Fire Department, our review indicates that there's a shift in personnel funding for the general fund to the tourist attraction fund, and that the proposal would also cut $1 million for five vacant critically needed civilian positions and funding for overtime. Additionally, the Department of Corrections, we, our review has led us to believe that the substitute bill does not fund $2.6 million that was requested for the ongoing consolidated agreement with the Guam Memorial Hospital, and reduces $1.8 million for the food service contract. We note that DOC's FY18 requests included personnel funding for approximately 35 corrections officers that were hired during this fiscal year. The Guam Regional Transit Authority, we see a reduction in $2.3 million in personnel of about 120,000, and proposed contract for the increase of bus services at about $2.2 million. The Department of Tomorrow Affairs has reduced general fund resources by the tune of about $1.3 million, of which 1.2 was for the Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, Personnel and Operations, and approximately $100,000 to fund two vacancies. We also note that there's a split between the HRA from the Department of Tomorrow Affairs, and that there is a further reduction in the request for the Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority to the tune of about $1.1 million, which would fund vacant funded positions, contractual services, and other projects pertaining to the redevelopment of Hagana. And then finally, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and we note that there's an overall reduction of about $1 million in funding for personnel operations, which would, again, result in inability to fill vacant funded positions, and that there's no funding for operations. So, collectively, insufficient funding for utilities, including power and water, would impact, we believe, park and public pool operations. There is a limited gaming fund appropriation contained in the substitute bill of about 608,000, but it's limited to repair and construction of facilities, and as we understand it, currently can't be used for personal and general operations. Mr. Speaker, in closing, we believe we can, with a commitment to working together to address stakeholder comments that I'm sure you'll be hearing throughout the rest of the afternoon, arrive at a budget for, first, for 2018, and that you have our commitment to work with all of the members of the legislature to begin the process of going through what we believe and we can agree to would be an adequate funding level of, so that we can then take those resources and allocate them throughout the rest of the government to provide, you know, the very best in services to the people of Guam. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Just so my colleagues understand, and the general public understand, in the budget, we rolled over every department, and in your one comment about the fact that the special, some of those special funds, the seven special funds that were appropriated that hadn't been appropriated in the past, each one of those was appropriated to the agency that was collecting it. If there was a slight increase in the rollover budget of the Guam Police Department, there was an increase of whatever that was in the, in the auto, in the, in the maintenance review, the Ovis collection. That stayed within the police department. We know that they've been using it in the past for other things, and we didn't touch it, we just, we just appropriated it. And the reason we did that was we were seeing that in a lot of these special funds that weren't being appropriated, that there was being transfers out, that it was being utilized, but it was never being appropriated by the legislature, so we were just taking it and appropriating it to the agency that was collecting it. The only one that did not get one and spend it within their agency was the recycling revolving fund. We saw that the recycling revolving fund, if you look at the audit, showed that there was a collection of about 2.9. The 400,000 was given to EPA, or 500,000 for the operation that they needed, but then down towards the bottom of it, transfers out of $2.02 million. No explanation as to what it was for, but there was a 2.02 transfer out, and so, we decided that since it was being utilized anyway, let's get it back to where it's supposed to be controlled. We're supposed, we have the purse strings, yes, you have, you have the bank account, but we have the purse strings, and we're saying, this 2.02 will go to this agency, and that agency, and these other agencies. And that was, that was the reason why those seven were included, because they had never been previously included in, in the submittals in any executive budget request, and were not being reported as revenue, but it was being spent without authorization, or at least any, any word from here. And so, that's, that was the reason why, and I'll explain the rollover later. And as to the comment about the UOG 500,000 from Highway, the Highway Fund, I think I've been beaten over the head enough times about the need to use highway funds for highway, and to stop utilizing it for the university or for GCC. And you know as well as I do that when the money goes into the general fund, it's not marked, it's fungible. As long as we pay the 500,000, we know that it was, in the loan documents, it was guaranteed by the Highway Fund, but as long as USDA gets its 500,000, it's not going to ask, are you sure this came from the gas station? Because the gas station dollar bills weren't marked HFF funds. In, in, in language that I try to explain to people, we may have gotten our initial mortgage at our house from our previous job at GIDEA or at the court, and it was guaranteed against that income. The fact that we have a different job now, and it's being paid for by our salary from the legislature or from BBMR, as long as the bank gets its monthly payments, it's not going to ask, are you sure this came from the source that you promised it from, or at least that we guaranteed it from 20 years ago? And so, I just wanted to stop the chorus about stop utilizing Highway Fund. Yes, it was guaranteed by Highway Funds, but it is being paid for by the general fund, and as long as it goes in and it comes out, I just, I, we're, hopefully, the banks will make the payment directly.
Yes.
And we'll go through all the others with, with your delayed time.
And, sir, just to be clear, my comment was that we thought that there just needed to be that prerequisite rapport with USDA, and if they're, if they acknowledge that there won't be an issue, then we'll be fine. All we're doing is pointing it out, sir.
Okay. No, and, and I, and I suppose we will, but if they get their check on October 1st, they're not going to ask and demand that we want to know that it came from the gas station. That's all, just as long as he doesn't call me and say that they're calling him.
Just as long as they don't throw me out of my office.
Anyway, let's, let's continue the hearing, and I'll address them as we, I just wanted to address those two specifically. Mr. Denai, you were the first one, and thank you for allowing me to have the administration speak first. I said, thank you for allowing me to allow the administration to speak first.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members of the legislature for allowing me to testify on the biennial budget bill. GBB's initial analysis of the bill found that the FY18 TAF was over-appropriated by 44, 44.6 million is the projection, and in our initial analysis, we saw that the total appropriations looked like 45.3. So, I just wanted to point that out, but overall, the tracking that we presented in our budget request, we had at 43.5 million, and so, this budget bill has the TAF at 44.6, so about a million more of TAF projected for next year, but GBB has given a rollover budget in this, in this budget bill, and it doesn't account to the resources needed for the Bureau to achieve these lofty goals in TAF projections as far as getting the visitor arrivals to hit these goals. I want to state that in our, in our budget presentation, we really highlighted two key areas in our two main markets, Japan and Korea. two main markets, Japan and Korea, where we need to put additional resources towards these two pillars of our tourism markets. Number one, Japan, we continue to see decreases in Japan, mainly due to a lack of air seats. We're losing air seats and airlines in Japan, but we have put into several programs to address this by offering more support to airlines to do charter flights, and then also to support new airlines to come in with regular service. But that's why in our budget request, we asked for additional funds to fund these programs to incentivize more airlines to fly from Japan, which is the key issue that we're facing in that market. So the rollover budget will not give us those resources to do that. I have some good news to announce. We have been working with HK Express to see if they'll fly from Japan, and they announced that they will fly from Nagoya starting in late October this year. So they'll do three times a week from Nagoya as a direct result of our air service support plan, which we put in our budget for next year, which would not be funded under the current budget. So what we would have to do is take those, the funding from other marketing programs in Japan, and to be able to put it towards the airline incentive programs that we've been doing, which will mean though that will create the supply, but we need the money to create the demand to fill the planes. So that's one of the areas that we're asking for in Japan. The other one is in Korea. Quite frankly, we've been able to really grow Korea market with a pretty reasonable bubble budget. We spent 2.2 million this year in Korea, but in fact, at this level of over 600,000 arrivals from Korea, we've already used the whole budget for this year, so we're just kind of cruising into the rest of the fiscal year until we get more budget for next year, because the 2.2 million is just not enough to sustain all the activities we need to do to maintain a 600,000-plus market and growing. We have a sixth Korean Airlines starting, Air Seoul, in September, and, you know, we really had to pull back on the marketing and promotion of this new flight because of a lack of budget. And, you know, things are going great, and it's great, but when you hit a certain level, you need to support those flights, you know, and keep all those six airlines full, or else someone will fall to the wayside and we'll start losing seats in Korea. The other thing that we wouldn't be able to do with a rollover budget is a lot of the visitor safety and satisfaction projects. So this body had authorized the Korean Concierge Pilot Program last year with an additional funding, so we put that continuation of that program and expanding it to not just cover Koreans, but all visitors, because we're getting more FIT visitors to Guam, so those are free independent travelers coming on their own. And so a lot of the times if they run into some problems, like remember the mother who was robbed at Tulever's Point, you know, they have no one to turn to, so the Korean Concierge Program took care of everything for her and her daughter, and is also helping with the translation and is the power of attorney for the prosecution for that case. So that program with a rollover budget, that program would not be funded and would go away. Also, we have some, our VSO program, we've been having a lot of great success with that program. We've even expanded to offering some lifeguarding services as DPR is having trouble providing all the lifeguarding services down in Tuman, and so we wouldn't be able to expand that program as we planned for next year. Also, with, this past year, we had a rollover budget in our, what's called our destination maintenance budget, and this is the budget that covers things like island-wide road maintenance. We also do beach cleaning, and we do all the Tuman hardscape and landscaping out of that budget. And so last year, we had a rollover of one, just a little over of a million dollars. The previous year, we had 1.2 million, and so we actually had a decrease this year of about 200,000 in that budget, and we had to cut several routes, so we stopped cutting the grass like on Route 8 and so forth. And so with this rollover at the 1.08 level, that'll put further pressure on our ability to do these island beautification projects that are done under that budget. And then the last thing I'd just like to mention, senators, is we asked for a modest increase of 200,000 to our admin budget to fund increased personnel costs due to the annual increments and retiree payments, and other things like trainings and just building general maintenance of the building. So if that is not received, we wouldn't be able to fund those critical admin functions. So I just want to thank Speaker and the legislature for allowing me to testify on these critical areas for the Bureau, and ask that, you know, we understand that the resources are tight, but it's critical that GBB receive these resources to market our destination and bring the visitors here to hit the projections that are promised in this budget, or else we won't be able to fund all the other things that the TAF is funding. So I think, you know, we really, from our feeling is we need to prioritize tourist attraction funding through the TAF and get those visitors here, and make sure that the TAF is strong so that can fund all these things, but without that, and we come up short, you know, if we don't have the resources to do our job, then we won't have the funding needed to, that the TAF is appropriated for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are those all delineated with a corresponding cost that you'd like us to?
Yeah, Speaker, I'll submit a written testimony with hard numbers for the body to review.
Okay. And I'm not sure, but our office did a tracking, and I think it was in tracking with the reports that were coming out of the administration, that TAF is tracking right now at 44.2. That's the tracking.
Yeah, I'm looking at Lester, and that's what he has to.
And so our increase by 400,000 is barely 1%. And so it was a very, very, very conservative increase over where we're at, and we felt comfortable that that very slight increase, I'm sure they would say 5%, but we just took it to just 1%. And so it is very conservative, but we feel comfortable about that.
I like you also like to under-promise and over-deliver.
There it is.
Yeah, there it is. But yeah, in all seriousness, I think, you know, we really ask, we do have some serious challenges with, I mean, Japan, obviously, and, you know, the growth in Korea, we need to feed that, but, you know, we have other markets like Taiwan, we lost Eva Air, it's down 40%. And so it's a very competitive destination, we're up against, you know, my team is up against the big boys, you know, and our competitors are Japan, Korea, Taiwan, Hawaii, all the Southeast Asian destinations. We have new destinations all the time that we're competing against for the same visitors, and, you know, it's a really competitive market, so we humbly ask this Bureau, I mean, this body to give us the resources we need to, you know, continue to hit record numbers and visitor arrivals.
And if you can get that to us like tomorrow.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
And we'll look at some of the numbers about what we can assist in, and specifically, how much did you need for your air service support fund?
Yeah, so the numbers I had was for, so for administration, you know, our request this year was 38, 3,850,000. This year, we had 3,600,000, so that's the 250 increase. For marketing, we had asked for about roughly over $3 million increase in marketing. I think with $2 million in extra marketing, we could put that towards Japan and Korea, that would be able to sustain those two markets. And then the other two areas were visitor safety and satisfaction. We asked for 1.4 million. Last year, we had 888,000. So I think with an extra 500,000 in visitor safety and satisfaction, we can fund this concierge program and the VSOs. And the last one was destination maintenance. Obviously, I think even 200,000 increase there from the 1.085 number two, what we had in FY 2016, 1.2, would be the minimum we need to at least keep the services we're providing today and not decrease them more. So I'll provide a detailed breakdown of those numbers and.
Thank you very much, and please thank the Board and all of the employees for being so cooperative and being reasonable in your requests. Thank you. Everybody, I'll ask questions in a minute. Let me start with, next in line is the chief. Oh wait, no, the President, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members of the body. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, to speak on the two-year budget. I know it's a rollover budget. I wish you would just roll it over one more time, and then maybe we could get a little bit more. You know, this represents, for us, of course, a bit of a disappointment, but I want to state, I think without fear of contradiction, at least from the university side, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to bring clarity to this process. This is, clarity and stability is the surest way to be able to plan for the future, and if we don't have that kind of clarity and stability and regularity in how we are financed from the government of Guam, it's difficult to plan that, because we have to spend a lot of time trying to figure out what we're going to do and how much money we're going to get from whatever source. So as always, even though I would say that we are disappointed in the rollover concept, we certainly appreciate it, and our greatest concern continues to be that we actually get the budgeted amount. That is the quintessential issue that we face. You know, I have had the opportunity, of course, to talk with many other university leaders, like for example Cal State or University Hawaii System, where they've experienced cuts from the legislature in terms of their overall budget. But what they have that we don't have is that when the legislature says you're going to get this amount of money, come that first quarter, that's the amount of money you're going to get, and then come the second quarter, that's the amount. So that the squabbling over the amount of money that you're going to get is vested in the legislative and the appropriation process. We don't have that. And so our concern continues to be the lack of concern about the allotment process. So, you know, we're on a good relationship with the Department of Administration these past few weeks, so I'm not, it's not that I'm complaining about them, but I'm complaining about the overall process. Now, I noticed that in this budget bill, you took out the continuing appropriation. And of course, we would prefer that you put back the continuing appropriation. In a way, it's like a security blanket, and sometimes that security blanket is more emotional than real, and we recognize that. I say that with all sincerity, but at the same, on the other hand, we need to kind of envision a process whereby we can guarantee that the, in the release of allotments, there's relative parity across the different agencies. You know, in the budget hearing that we had here at the university, the question, I think Senator Espaldón made a good point, we don't know what's in store for us, we don't know where we're going, we don't, you know, we don't know the future. Well, we don't know, and it's certainly uncertain, but we do know that the process that we should have in place is that if there's going to be sacrifice, it's shared sacrifice, that we're all being disadvantaged in the same way, that some agencies shouldn't be disadvantaged more than other agencies. And I don't know how you legislatively do that. I'm not in the Guam Legislature, but I'm furiously researching the National Council on State Legislatures to look how other state budgets do that, and there may be some allotment measures that they put in place that actually help guide that process. I don't know what they are, I'd be happy to talk about them some more, hopefully we can resolve that in a kind of a logical way, and bring the same clarity to the allotment process that the legislature is trying to bring to the appropriation process. So I appreciate your support, and I appreciate your understanding, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
If you find the language that will do that, we'd be willing to implement it.
Okay.
The only one that we understand right now is we put in there that BBMR is not to hold a reserve on you.
That's right.
And so they sign and release all your funds, or at least the, but he's not the problem. He releases it, but whether or not the cash is going to be given to you, and I know, we already beat up administration the last time.
That's right, that's right.
And so we won't relitigate that today, but I understand, because, and the rollover and the continuing.
Appropriation.
It just, if we do that, then they just keep using 18.
That's right.
To pay your 17, and they'll use 19 to pay your 18, and you're still not caught up, and I don't know how to be able to do that. I know that Mr. Carlson has signed all the requisite documents to get it out of his area, but it's the cash.
Yeah. And you're absolutely correct, Mr. Speaker, but that allotment process has to be something that, you know, I mean, I understand that the administration and the executive branch has control over that process. They're the ones monitoring actual revenues, they have certain responsibilities, they should have some flexibility, but that flexibility shouldn't be that some agencies get only 40% of what they ask, and another agency get 80% of what they ask. That's the shared sacrifice concept. And if I can find a constitution-proof mechanism for that, you'll be the first to know, and I'm researching.
Thank you. No, and I just want to thank you and President Okada for being such good, I mean, not so much, I should thank you for being good sports, I understand that you're being.
Yeah, being a good sport is.
Is not, you're being left holding the bag, but at least I want to thank the fact that you have not burned your, set your hair on fire and.
Okay.
You'd look like me, or Chief. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I appreciate that.
I'm right behind you both.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, and members of the Committee on Adjudication and Appropriation. My name is Joseph Cruz, and I'm the Chief of Police for the Guam Police Department. My comments this afternoon are on behalf of GPD in response to the substitute budget bill. On May 31, 2017, the Guam Police Department appeared before the Speaker and the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication to provide information on the department's fiscal year 2018 budget proposal. GPD's FY 2018 general fund projections from $36,650,450 in the executive budget requests down to $30,35,239 in the substitute budget bill signifies a shortfall in general fund appropriations of $6,565,211 in the upcoming fiscal year. This represents a 17.94% reduction when compared to the executive budget request projections. Now, while we realize that, we also realize that there seems to be a very significant increase in the special funds category with the inclusion of the Guam Highway Funds to the amount of $1.5 million, the Police Services Fund to the amount of $1.3 million, the Tourist Attraction Fund, which is the highest increase, at $2.7 million, the Police Patrol Vehicle and Equipment Revolving Fund at $283,753, bringing the total to $5,886,544. And that's an increase over $4,077,632. Initially, we asked for $1.8 million. That represents, to us, we see that as a representation of an increase of 225%. That represents, to us, we see that as a representation of an increase of 225%. The substitute budget bill allocates requirements and the unpredictable revenue stream of these funding sources does not directly support the intended projections submitted by GPD through the EBR or the executive budget requests. More importantly, it is that the $4 million increase in the special fund category does not balance the $6.5 million shortfall in the general fund, signifying the sentiment that the GPD programs in FY 18 may not be pursued. Fiduciary responsibility required by GPD is to allocate for continued obligations that support operations such as salaries and benefits for our personnel, as well as supplies and materials and contractual services supporting our personnel's needs. These needs are seen in more detail with automated dispatch and crime report development, secured reliable communications, fuel for our patrol cars, and all projections provided in each category of the budget proposal provided in the executive budget request. Pursuant to this substitute budget bill, this now requires a reallocation of special funding into the general fund categories. GPD's redistribution of appropriations in compliance with the substitute budget bill requires certain special funds, such as the Guam Highway Fund, to specifically support operations in our Highway Patrol Division. Salaries and benefits for HPD will now be supported by this special fund. The Tourist Attraction Fund will support salaries, benefits, supplies and materials for the entire two-month Timoney precinct command. Police Services Fund supports administrative services that will be funding the categories of salaries and benefits for our non-sworn personnel to include contractual services, supplies, equipment and other capital outlay needs. These same categories in the general fund are receiving all special fund support. Essentially, none of the programs in the special funds, as we projected it in the executive budget request, will be funded by the substitute budget bill. GPD did conduct a horizontal analysis, and the bottom line up front is that from the substitute bill, we see that the Police Services Fund at $1.3 million, the Guam Highway Fund at $1.5 million, and the Tourist Attraction Fund at $2.7 million will all be shifted over to make up for the shortfall of $30 million from the general fund. This leaves an amount of $963,329.73. When taken with the $1.8 million that we initially asked for, which because all the special funds are being transferred to general funds, we see a total shortfall of $2,772,242. Now, what kind of impact does that have to the Guam Police Department? It means then that for the special funds, civilian positions which are currently under recruitment may be, may not be realized. Positions like a contracted staff psychologist, program coordinators ones which control over 25 grants and subgrants, data entry clerks to improve efficiency at our records and ID sections, and law enforcement dispatchers to improve dispatching and response times to calls for service by the general public. Dr. Mary Okada is constructing a DNA laboratory at the Guam Community College for the Guam Police Department. To be able to staff that DNA laboratory, we're looking to hire three criminalists, two fingerprint examiners, and transition police officer positions from crime scene investigators and ballistic experts to civilian positions. So there are other requirements from the special funds that includes supplies, repair equipment, hardware upgrades for the AAGES, as well as the AFIS fingerprint system. There are also services like power, phone and internet that also come from our special services. On the general fund side, where we saw that shortfall of $963,329.73, the impact to the Guam Police Department is that those POT positions, which I testified before this committee on the 31st of May, are so important because with Public Law 133-163, that recruitment process is all hinged on a funding source that will allow the Guam Police Department to continue to recruit in our, into our force. In addition to our police officer trainees, detention facility guards, our positions that we need to fill, as well as the normal attrition rate or resignations and retirements of our police officers. And I bring this to light, ladies and gentlemen, because we were very aggressive in the curtailment of that ugly word or phrase that we call overtime. Overtime, when I first became the chief, was to the tune of about $2.9 million. In FY 16, we brought it down to 1.8. In this current FY, we only projected 1.6, and for the next fiscal year, with what we were asking for, we're only looking for $800,000. But that's all hinged on the fact that we get funding, appropriate funding, to be able to recruit, to hire and be able to promote as well. Because as I said earlier in previous testimonies, the only way to take care of overtime is to recruit into the Guam Police Department and hire on a normal or regular basis. So to that point, again, overtime will continue to be a problem for us should we not receive the appropriate funding levels that we are humbly asking for. So on behalf of the Guam Police Department, Mr. Speaker, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this, these comments in response to this budget bill. And again, like Acting Director Carlson said, and the president, as well as Mr. Denite, GPD is more than willing to work with this committee, as well as your staff, to appropriately or come to a level where the Guam Police Department is adequately budgeted, all for the purpose of appropriately serving and protecting and maintaining our public safety for the people of Guam. Thank you, Monsieur Dusmasi.
Thank you very much, Chief, and maybe now might be the time that I publicly explain why I felt that it was safe, or at least okay, to have a rollover budget. If I can get the staff to put up on the screen a report that has been mandated by law for five or six years, and miraculously, this year, it was actually provided. We hadn't received it for the last four, but it did come in this year. If you rolled it to the top, it's the, it's the nine-plus-three report. Nine-plus-three means either BBMR or Department of Administration has compiled and reported how much was actually spent, I mean, what the appropriated level was for your department, and that's under the first column, which is Public Law 33-185, right? And in the second column, it shows BBMR's tracking at nine-plus-three. So if you roll down to Department of Public Safety, can you roll that down, please, for me? It's about five or six up. Your appropriation level was 38 mil, 38 million, no, 35,438,269. BBMR is reporting and saying the nine-plus-three, that they're expecting that all you'll, all you'll spend is $34,295,327, leaving $1,142,942 unspent in your current appropriation. This was not my report, gentlemen. This came from the administration on a nine-plus-three.
Just give them the explanation.
Mr. Carlson.
I have Mr. Tai Tingfong, who I'd like to get the opportunity to give some clarification, if you don't mind.
My name is Bill Tai Tingfong, I'm a BMA supervisor at Bureau of Budget Management Research. I was the one who compiled the nine-plus-three report. The nine-plus-three report, which reflects nine months of actual expenditures from October 1st to June 30th, and three months of projected expenditures from August to, from July to September. Now, the expenditures are, are straight out of the AS 400 and are basically reflective of only those appropriation accounts that are in Part 4 of Chapter 1, Parts 2, 3, 4 of Chapter 2, Chapter 5, and, and Chapter 10. These chapters are, the expenditures are based on the appropriation allocation report. Those are the nine-plus-three expenditures that we detailed. Now, the expenditures does not take into account expenditures for special appropriations to the department, so like in cases of DOC, which has their annual appropriations to the department, it doesn't take into account expenditures like for police officers if they were appropriated funding from the vacancy cost pool, if they were receiving funding for the recruits under federal grants. So the expenditures are only reflective, that's what's in the AS 400 for those particular accounts. So there may be more expenditures that are being incurred for each of the agencies that are not actually reflected on the nine-plus-three reports.
But, but you do report that there are amounts that, in every department, you did a nine-plus-three, right?
That's correct.
And did you add up all of them and try to figure out how much was not going to be spent at the end of the year?
That's correct. If they're in requisitions or purchase orders, most of those are encumbered, but may not have yet been paid. So we project those that are in those encumbrances to be spent on the last three months.
And so we, that's what we did. We went to every single one and we, we saw how much you were reporting for each one and.
Most of the expenditures are.
In our compilation, that's what we showed for coming out of your report.
Right.
And if you, if they show that back up on the screen, it showed that there was going to be about $9,922,000 that hadn't been spent, at least even from your nine-plus-three. And I and my OFB staff were a little, a little weary or leery about your projection for three. If, if you'd put up on screen the nine-plus-three compilation that we have in our report on the budget, the one in our, in our, in our narrative.
What does that show? How can it work here? Sir, is there a way we can get a hard copy? I really can't even read that.
I need that page from our, our, our report from the dashboard.
Does that show a variance?
Showing our totals about how much was in personnel, or to show why we question the nine-plus-three and how we felt that it was padding.
So we thought of the GPD, so we really felt that.
One panel.
But the total, but you know, you suffered specific.
GPD.
So I don't know, I just wanted to try to work with the ideas and try to get.
I guess you can ask.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the hard copy. For the rest of the public who are vision impaired like myself, what is up on the screen actually represents majority of, not all of, the executive line agencies. And there are three columns here and specific, I think we were talking about the Guam Police Department. And if I understand what it is that's being presented here, I look across to the right, I see a $1.1 million BBMR versus our nine-plus-three variance versus the budget act that's currently in place. I know the speaker made reference to $9.9 million, but that's a cumulative total.
Yes, no, for all the agencies, I.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I was kind of like, I think even the chief looked at me and goes, "What? $9 million?"
No.
So I, I think Mr. Tai Tingfong, you know, again, leery as your OFB staff may be, we are projecting that there will be an increase in expenditure activity just because of the closure of the GSA dates and DOA dates for the encumbrances.
And.
So, but, but just, just to your point, sir, if I may, with the police department, I think that what it is that we're looking at here represents and substantiates what the chief said. I mean, you're, you're looking at a budget approval of $35 million, but yet the substitute bill is, is, is less than that, and I think that's the point he's trying to make.
But with, with all the other funds that are going into it, it adds up to $35 million for the department, or it should. Everybody should have gotten a full rollover.
Okay, and they, we did some analysis, I don't have it with me right, right now, but we actually went across and did, as the chief mentioned, a horizontal analysis. And I believe our, our numbers that I, were contained in my testimony reflect our analysis, and it's, you know, $2 million short, 2.5.
And it may be that you have released it from your department, but like the university, you didn't hold any reserves, but there's still almost $15 million short in cash.
That wasn't what I meant, sir, I apologize. What, what we, our analysis of your substitute bill, funding for GPD versus the governor's executive budget request, which I think is the apples-to-apples comparison that we're doing here, we, we show, I saw 2.5 million reduction overall, and he shows 2.7. So there, there are some inconsistencies that, again, we.
Okay, well, then, I'm glad you pointed that out, because as Nate pointed out, there may have been something else. But I specifically, my specific instruction was everybody was supposed to get a rollover budget, the same amount that they had this year, and.
Okay, there, and.
Because my justification was, giving you a rollover budget, you would be getting the addition, your increase would be that $1 million that you didn't spend this year.
Yes, and, and I understand, and for the public, you know, education as well as I think ours here, we're doing a couple of different comparisons here. Because as the chief mentioned, when GPD came here, May 31st, they were advocating for the, the executive budget request amount with, with requirements for the cycle and all the other things that he just talked about. You are now talking about the existing level of appropriations that are contained in this fiscal year budget. So there, there are differences in what it is that we're comparing here. You know, when I look at what it is that you have with respect, and going back to my comments on your continued optimism on, you know, the state of Guam's economy, if I take a look at what it is that we have with respect to your substitute bill versus the current budget bill with respect to general fund revenue available for appropriation, my number is that you are, you are stating that there will be a $7.2 million increase in general fund revenues available for appropriation. So we do have a little bit of disparity in what it is that we're, we're using for comparison purposes, and hence the idea that this is, you know, it's only been a week since you released the substitute bill. We're all sitting here and just, you know, willing to be able to like, you know, go through the numbers and go through our spreadsheets and your spreadsheets and maybe have more clarification on the nine-plus-three report so that everybody understands where we're coming from and how we, you know, just a little bit better rapport. All designed to come up with. All designed to come up with the best possible product. We're committed to doing that, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. And yes, we, we will. And it, and I want to thank you for preparing it because it's been in statute for at least six years and we finally got the first one today. I mean, this, this.
Again, sir, that's my, my, my staff, that's not me.
I'm glad.
Kudos go to the staff.
I'm glad you're getting them to comply with the statute. But anyway, we'll, we'll address that. And what the point that we're trying to make is, I know that you would have rather had 40 or last year where you told us you needed 45.
Yes, sir.
And you're operating at 34 currently. It's, we just need, we just need to have people, how much is actually going to be needed to, to operate? We've given you your vacancy pool fund that you have dragged on for, what, three years since the last election?
Yes, sir.
So, um. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we'll discuss it more.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Uh, who is next?
Okay, Hafferty, Speaker BJ Cruz, Oversight Chairwoman and Vice Speaker Terahy, uh, Senators, uh, members of the Committee on Appropriation and Judication. I am really, uh, happy to be here. I am the Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation. I've met most of you. What the Public Defender Service Corporation does is we provide legal representation to the indigent population of Guam. Uh, right now, we provide, uh, criminal representation. When we presented our budget in, uh, back in June 23rd, we indicated to you our goal of also providing, uh, civil representation and, and limited matters to those who cannot afford an attorney. Uh, when we presented our budget on June 23rd, many of the senators, unfortunately, were not able to be present, so we're glad to be able to, uh, appear before you and address you today. Now, while we are disappointed at the status quo budget that we will receive in fiscal year 2018, and then the slight increase that we will receive in 2019, we recognize that Guam is being, is fiscally challenged and that the legislature really has a tough chore of, uh, meeting this challenge. Uh, we will do our part in contributing to the government of Guam's, uh, continued financial well-being, and we promise to meet whatever challenge you give us without it affecting our indigent clients. When we came before this esteemed body on June 23rd, we identified our organic growth and what we need to survive in fiscal year 2018. Our organic growth alone without the civil division was over $200,000. Um, I know that, uh, we did submit a nine-three report and I just took a look at that and although our actual numbers this year are going to be less than the budgeted amount, uh, it doesn't account for the fact that we had, uh, three attorney positions that we need to, uh, fill, and we're going to be filling those, uh, in, well, two in September with attorney ones and, uh, a, a more experienced attorney in October. And so that's why our actual, uh, expenditures are less than what was, uh, budgeted. Uh, if we are actually, uh, fully staffed, uh, for an entire year, we will, uh, suffer, we won't be able to meet the budget, but we'll find a way to, we'll find a way to do it. But because of, you know, I know that you're basing this on the nine-three report, we just wanted to explain that over the course of the last year, attorneys, uh, we've had a couple attorneys that have left the office and moved back to the mainland, and so that created some amount of, uh, lapsed funds or unused funds. And so that's why our actual expenditures are less than what, uh, our budgeted, uh, our budget was actually provided. But, uh, we're hoping to be fully staffed in the next, uh, by, uh, mid-October with the attorneys that we're going to be bringing on board. And that would bring us to 16 attorneys. Uh, right now, we have 11 judi, well, 10 judicial officers that we appear before. There's talk of an eighth judge, that will make it, uh, 11 judicial officers, and that's 16 attorneys, uh, appearing before 11 judicial officers. So it's, uh, we're pretty tight in terms of our time, but, uh, we will meet whatever challenge, uh, that we're confronted with. We foresee that this moderate increase that we're going to get in 2019 is about 70,000. That'll be, uh, short of what we will need to maintain our staffing levels and the projected increase of benefits. Therefore, we ask that the legislature provide a supplemental budget hearing towards the end of fiscal year 2018 and before 2019 so that, uh, we can demonstrate to the legislature that we do need additional funding. I, I really, I mean, there is great value in having a two-year budget. It, uh, forces management to, to plan ahead. Uh, however, uh, we didn't actually prepare a 2019 budget, uh, this year, and so, uh, we would appreciate additional time to submit and justify any other increases that we foresee in 2019. For example, um, we have, uh, our computer servers about 10 years old. We might need to, uh, request funding for a new system. Hopefully it won't be, uh, that expensive, but we'll make do with, with what we have. So if the legislature does, uh, have a supplemental budget hearing, then at that time, we could provide the legislature with a status report of our financial posture at that time, and hopefully, uh, we'll, the government will generate more revenues and we could seek additional funding. When we were here back in June, we indicated our desire to reopen the civil division in fiscal year 2018. After, uh, seeing that we are going to just get a rollover budget, um, we've talked about it and we have not abandoned that goal. Given the realities within the biennial budget, PDAC will continue with its track record of doing more with less. We've had several meetings with our team throughout the course of this year, and we know that, uh, the indigent community of Guam does need assistance in civil work as well. And we refuse to let the nationwide assault on the indigent population reach our shores. We will prepare to gradually resume legal representation for our indigent population who are challenged facing issues concerning divorce, custody, visitation, guardianship, and advanced healthcare directives. Our team stands united in our mission to serve Guam's less fortunate, and we will continue to help those individuals in desperate need of assistance. We know that our ability to do so will be rather limited as we shift some of our resources from criminal to civil matters, but this is a challenge that we are willing to take on, and something is always, uh, better than nothing. We are the voice of Guam's indigent population, and we pledge to continue representing them in legal matters to the best of our ability. That being said, it would be an injustice to our constituents if I did not make a last dish effort for additional funding. If we were given half of what we are requested for the civil division, approximately 150,000, I believe then we can sleep well at night knowing that we helped someone's father, mother, brother, sister, son or daughter with legal representation they cannot afford, whether it's a criminal or a civil matter. I ask that you keep this request in mind as amendments are made to the biennial budget bill. Senators, thank you for your time. We do not envy your duty to establish priorities. However, we do urge this body to consider assisting the indigent population of Guam by helping us help them so that we can once again fulfill our statutory mandate and represent indigent constituents in civil matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And did we ever get clarification on how it was that the PD's office contributed 1.2 million to the governor's, uh, um?
I, I really wish that existed in our account, but it doesn't. It, it seemed like it was some.
In the audit, maybe the, uh, auditor's may, we'll speak to it like there was a.
It had something to do with us receiving, uh, the funds for alternate public defender. It, it was some accounting thing that I don't really understand. All I know is that, uh, we did not receive an, there isn't an extra 1.2 million surplus from, uh, fiscal year 2017.
Because in, in, in the, in the audit, they should, it, it shows that there, the supposed surplus.
Of one, that's correct.
Most of it is loan-related, but there's 1.2 from the Public Defender Service Corporation.
And I, I know our controller met with, uh, the OPA and I think they resolved that issue. It had something to do with the, the money that we get from, for alternate public defender. And so, uh, but it's not, it wasn't a surplus from 2017.
I know the OPA is looking at me quizzically and, and I'm just, my, my memory is still good.
Oh, yes.
And, and it was PDSC that you guys reported as the 1.2. Because I've jumped them several times and I'm still trying to figure out how they contributed to the, to the surplus.
I wish we could say that we did contribute to the surplus.
Oh, well, thank you very much. And, uh, we'll try to figure out something. All right, thank you very much for making your presentation. And just, uh, if you look at the, at the, uh, the proposed, the, uh, proposed subject, proposed budget bill on page 89, we, the summary of the funding for the police department shows 3.35921. I don't know where we're reading 32, but with all the special funds that we've added up that you didn't want, um, it comes out to 35. Let's get the, do any, I, well, they're still here before they run away. Does anybody have any questions at these part? You? No? Okay, public auditor. Oh, Mr. Linsangan? And then OPA and DRT, if DRT is still here. Peter John, you want to come up? Mr. Lamarena, Senator, please join us? And, um, Mr. Paris from Customs? Were you going to testify? Just come on. Please introduce yourself and.
Uh, my name is Zedfri Linsangan. I'm, uh, always happy and honored to be here, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon to all of you. I'm, uh, against this, uh, this biennial budget proposal, Mr. Speaker. While, uh, I agree that you have, uh, good intention in reforming the budget process and you and, uh, Mr., and the governor, Mr. Kalbo, for that purpose, but, uh, I feel that the reason is too weak to, uh, move with the biennial budget proposal. Uh, the governor is saying that we need to plan ahead. And while your position is because it will be political and be contentious for next year, uh, hearing, what we're dealing here are taxpayers' money that need to be safeguarded and protected. And I would like to, uh, read to you a report by, uh, Budget and Policy Priorities by Richard Cogan in, uh, 2012. Um, many budget experts have concluded that the disadvantages of biennial budgeting outweigh the advantages and make it an unwise course to pursue. For instance, in the testimony in 2004 by the Congressional Budget Director Douglas Holtz Ikin warned, changing to a two-year cycle could have significant drawbacks. It could diminish the effectiveness of congressional control of spending in the appropriation process and could make adjusting to rapidly changing budgetary and economic condition more difficult. I will also read to you some of the highlights on the report. It also may be noted that the majority of states, including nearly of all of the largest states, use annual rather than biennial budgeting, and that a number of states abandoned biennial budgeting in recent decade, decades because of problems it was causing. Since 1968, five times as many states have moved from biennial to an, to annual budgeting as have done the reverse. Substantial change in economic condition also can occur in the intervening period, especially in our island, that are susceptible to typhoon and economic condition. Biennial budgeting would make it harder for the federal government to respond expeditiously to change in such conditions. Biennial budgeting also may hind, may hinder broader efforts to reorder federal budget As this observation about change in needs over a two-year cycle suggests, biennial budgeting is not likely to work in the real world in the way it appears on paper, because you cannot count the checks while it's, it's not yet hats. According to the National Conference of State Legislatures, 44 states practiced biennial budgeting in 1940. Now, just 19 states do. The disadvantages of biennial budgeting are likely to outweigh the advantages. The apparent drawbacks are sufficiently serious that if federal policymakers wish to pursue biennial budgeting, the procedure should first be tested on an experimental basis with a limited number of budget accounts. That's why, Mr. Speaker, I, uh, believe that we should not pursue this biennial budgeting because the disadvantages outweigh the advantages, especially on your, uh, notion that it will be political. Where in the world of politics is it the reason that if we cannot lick them, join them, you need to stand your ground? Regardless that anybody is politicking or not, you do what is right. That's how the leader is. You just listen and listen. Maybe one out of 100 that I will say will help the island is correct. And then, uh, on the, on planning, that's what, planning ahead is the main reason of the governor. How about if we don't receive the, the protection, the projection that you are expecting? Then what, what will happen? There will be a lot of layoffs in the government employees. That's why, uh, Mr. Speaker and, uh, my dear senators, what we need to do, I believe, is is stop all the, uh, capital improvement from all different agency. We don't need the new administration building from the port or additional building from the judiciary. Only the problem is the parking. We need, we need to live within our means. Will the operation be affected if we still have, we only have, we have the old building? If you have the money, then, then, uh, that's not a problem. We can go ahead and, and, uh, improve or, uh, build a new building. And what I can see is all the agencies are contesting improvements here, improvement that, there, but they don't have money to, to build. And they're all getting it from the general fund. And then what will happen? You don't have money to, to pay. And then what will happen? You don't have money to, to pay the tax. Then you'll go to borrowing again until our government goes bankrupt. Just like what happened to, in Detroit. The retirees have no recourse but to accept the ruling of the judge. Their pension were all reduced. And it likely will happen here because the economic situation right now is not good. And it will continue. As you can see with the military buildup, how long they've been saying that? For the last ten years. And the money that they are spending there are almost close to what they've been spending for the last thirty, twenty years. They have not really made the major significant funds to put in the base. And everything now is changing because the, right now Japan and Korea needs them. That buildup will never be, will not even materialize. The reason why they're just, what they're doing is just protecting their assets. They're building about, to block the, the missile. That's it. That's why to make the budget for a two-year cycle is, is not good, Mr. Speaker. And what we need to do, I believe, is to think what the added revenue that we can fiscalize to create law. Just like now, maybe there's hundred seventy-four thousand population here in Guam, hundred seventy-four thousand four ninety-six. And there's only, what, forty, twenty-five thousand people voting. And then maybe you can, you can help the election commission to impose filing fee for the, for the candidates. Because in California and other states, that's what they've been doing for the governor. All they need is only sixty-five nominating petition. And the governor had to pile three thousand six hundred dollars, imagine for thirty-six point nine million population. See? So it helps, it helps, it's small only, but it helps the, the general fund. And it applies to all people running for office, from governor to mayor. And it worries, like the best governor, we have to pile two thousand six hundred dollars for the filing fee. That's why, and we, we, before we even, you know, take a look at the budget hearing or process, OPA is very important. We, we need the, they need to submit their audit even before the hearing will be started. In fact, my recommendation is strip them of their authority to hold procurement process and instead concentrate on their expertise, which is more important. Because they'll be dealing with, with auditing all the agency. And it's an elected, an independent body. And in fact, as mandated by the Organic Act of Guam, OPA can be abolished. Or it can be created, but it can be abolished, including the office of the public prosecutor's office. But we shouldn't be doing that because their job is so important to, to make the job easier for every senator to look at all the budget appropriation requests of every agency. Now, you know, we're always talking about check and balance, check and balance. And we all know that the governor is very powerful. Section one four two-two of the Organic Act of Guam gave him the, all the general supervision and control of all the instrumentalities, bureaus, agency of the executive branch of government. He can, he can terminate, he can remove officers unless otherwise provided by the court, by the law of Guam. See, if you remove that, that defining moment in the senator's role, you're protecting or carrying out your fiduciary duties and responsibility. You just eliminate the check and balance, which always, what the lawmaker is saying every time that you are trying to conduct an oversight hearing. And, and right now, I, I was very satisfied because right now there's a lot of senators that are really working hard and conducting oversight hearing because it's very important. You know, you need to question why, what, how, why do you, do you always buying books every year? What will happen to the old books? Why we have to, to make another charter school and we cannot afford it? You know, we already have GCSE. We have the public school. If we have the extra money, maybe it's the right time. You know, for another, for another charter school because that will be financed again by, by who? By, by the general fund again. And then you don't have money again for other, for other money that we have borrowed. You don't have any payment. See, that's, that's my main point. See, you will eliminate your most important fiduciary responsibility as fiscalizer, as, as senators that will conduct check and balance. That's why, yeah, I would like to, again, thank you for trying to reform this, you know, process on budget because I sincerely believe that, that you have honest intention. And I'm trying to understand you, but I cannot help myself but, but disagree, Mr. Speaker. And, yeah, and before I, I go, I just want to, to recite, to recite to you a prayer by Catherine Farmer, if I can still remember it, that God allow me to, I cannot, I cannot, give me, give me the peace and serenity to accept the things that I cannot change. The courage to change the things that I can and the wisdom to know the difference. Thank you very much, my dear senators. I hope I brighten your day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Linsaugen. Ms. Hetchinov.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, Speaker Cruz, committee members and senators. My name is Yuka Hetchinova. I'm the deputy public auditor. And with me today in the back here are the audit supervisors Rodalyn Girardo and Llewellyn Terlahi. We're here representing the Office of Public Accountability. The public auditor is currently off island, so we're representing the office for her. And thank you, first of all, for letting us provide testimony on Bill twenty-two thirty-four. In Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four, the OPA's appropriation for FY twenty eighteen is identical to our twenty seventeen appropriation of one point three nine six million. In our recent report of OPA's nine months actual plus three months expenditure forecast, which we did submit, we projected a seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall for FY twenty seventeen and we plan to cover this shortfall with FY twenty sixteen operational lapses. However, we are concerned that we will have a much larger shortfall in FY twenty eighteen and FY twenty nineteen based on Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four. FY twenty sixteen provides a good baseline for OPA operational needs because we were able to maintain a staff complement of fifteen and we carried the staffing to FY twenty seventeen. And this was after we've had many years of turnover and fluctuations in our staffing. And it looked like in FY twenty sixteen, we were able to finally maintain a staff of fifteen and carry it over into FY twenty seventeen. In FY twenty sixteen, we expended one point five one million and we estimate our expenditures will be similar for FY twenty seventeen at one point four seven million. OPA was granted hiring autonomy this year in January and we thank the legislature for giving us that autonomy. We recently filled two vacancies and we anticipate maintaining a staff complement of seventeen to eighteen staff throughout FY twenty eighteen and FY twenty nineteen. For FY twenty eighteen, we are projecting personnel costs to be one point three million for seventeen employees. This will only leave ninety-six thousand dollars for operations and a potential shortfall of two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four also allowed a very modest increase of twenty-eight thousand dollars for FY twenty nineteen, which will again result in shortfalls, especially if we maintain our current staffing, which we do anticipate we will. So in closing, thank you very much for your time and attention to our testimony today. We, we really are very proud of the fact that we've been able to maintain our staffing after many years of fluctuations. We're maintaining the staff has really translated into doing more audits, getting a lot more work done. If we lose staff again, we're just gonna, our productivity is gonna definitely suffer and we're gonna just be back to rotating staff again and, and we're very happy that we're able to hire. We have the autonomy to hire, but now we can't afford to hire. So thank you again for your time and attention.
Will you be, be providing us with an amount that you believe would be, would be able to sustain both years?
No. We're projecting about one, one point five million looks to be about what we can, we, we need for about fifteen employees. We hired two additional that just started this month. So for FY eighteen, we're already gonna have a shortfall. But we think that our operational lapses from last year will cover that, but we're concerned about twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. If we maintain the seventeen to eighteen staff that we have now, which we really want to keep onboard.
Okay. Thank you. Peter John and then Director.
Thank you, sir. Buenas tardes, senor Speaker and members of the committee. My name is Peter John Camacho, hospital administrator, CEO of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I am here to present, to testify on Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four, biennial appropriations for FY twenty eighteen and FY twenty nineteen. Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four for twenty eighteen proposes a budgetary appropriation to the GMHA in the amount of twenty-one million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Analysis of the funding though shows fifteen point seven million from the pharmaceutical fund, of which eleven point eight million is to be used as a Medicaid match, leaving three point nine million as the actual subsidy. The reason is that the eleven point eight million is actually a local match for reimbursement for services provided to Medicaid patients. The Healthy Futures funding provides approximately three point three million and the general fund provides two point two million. The true subsidy then is approximately nine point five million. When the hospital presented its twenty eighteen budget, we requested a subsidy of approximately thirty-six point three million as presented by Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four. This leaves a shortfall of twenty-six point nine million. The shortfall would manifest in an inability to recruit critically needed staff in medical, nursing and clinical support areas. We would again be faced with the continuing inability to procure needed capital equipment and likely having challenges with paying vendors and credit holds and less than optimal patient outcomes. Although we have advised our managers to think ahead to FY twenty nineteen needs, we have not yet begun those discussions on those anticipated needs, although there is an increase proposed in twenty nineteen. As you know, the GMHA has assumed administration of the DOC clinic. Funding does not appear to have been addressed in the DOC budget section and we respectfully request that review. We respectfully request the legislature to reconsider the twenty eighteen funding level identified for the island's public safety net hospital. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My name is Tony Lamarena, Director of the Department of Corrections. Testify on, on Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four. Primarily, Senator, we want to, our Speaker and Senators, DOC comes before you today primarily to address the concerns that we have in regards to the proposed funding levels for substitute bill thirty, twenty-two thirty-four. As Peter John earlier stated, a good portion of our increase for this year is for the purposes of funding the clinic at DOC. As many of you are aware, just this year, the consent decree was lifted by the federal courts primarily because of the work that has been done through this memorandum of understanding between the Department of Corrections and GMH. This obviously will highly put at risk our status with the federal courts. If, if the clinic is not funded, there is just no way that we could function with the budget as presented. Again, like I stated, the good majority of the increases stated is primarily to cover the, the cost of Guam Memorial Hospital running the clinic. Also our food services, you know, again, you know, unlike any other institutions, we, we have seven hundred plus individuals at any given time. Just this week alone, we had three committed by the courts to DOC. So, you know, we, we forget that individuals, and it's the reason why the consent decree came into play, is the reason I go to court at least once or twice a month is because those individuals confined at DOC have constitutional rights. When those constitutional rights are violated, the court calls me in, in to, to, to explain why their, their rights were violated. I was just in court last week because medication was, was late a couple of times. And we had to explain with GMH and, and that was resolved. So, you know, we, we have to remember that, that although these individuals are confined and incarcerated, we have to realize that they do have constitutional rights and we try our utmost to ensure that these, that these are adhered to. So in regards to catering services, you know, from three point three million is what we anticipated. With the funding level, we can only allocate about one point six, one point eight million, which would be a shortfall of about one point four. So again, we've got seven hundred some bodies in there. And then our, our contract is up next year in March. And obviously those increase, there, there's gonna be an increase. This, this current contract that we have, the three years is up. And obviously with inflation and the cost of goods, we anticipate even a higher cost in, in food cost. Some of the programs that we're trying to do to ensure safety, not only for the inmates, but also for our officers and everyone that works at DOC. We recently purchased a hundred ICANNIC radios for the purposes of having communications with every single individual on duty. Funding would not be available to continue those contractual services for our, our radio services. The other thing too is we've currently have fourteen inmates housed in federal, in off-island prisons, which cost about five hundred and one thousand. This year's proposed budget, normally we would get this as a miscellaneous appropriation. This year, we're gonna have to take it out of our general fund budget. So that even, we're already short three point two million with the Bureau of Prisons at five hundred thousand. And then we also have to contribute about a hundred thousand to the judicial information system. That will come out again based on this bill out of our general fund appropriation, not of the miscellaneous appropriation. So really our shortfall will then expand to three point eight million dollars. And Senators, you know, unlike my counterpart who was here earlier from the Guam Visitors Bureau, and I was there back in two thousand ten, we don't need to recruit people to come to DOC. You know, we're, we're full. And, and, you know, I, I know the, the good speaker is appropriating money to, to the judicial, judicial system for the purpose of electronic devices. But even with that, you know, even if we, we've removed one hundred detainees 100 detainees from DOC, it still doesn't lower the number of officers that we'll need. It's like having a classroom. You've got 25 kids, now you've got 20. You still need a teacher. You still pay the same power. You know, the decreases we see probably is in meals and probably some utility costs, but, you know, right now, you know, we've done a great job, I think, in regards to lowering our overtime this year. Since we brought in the officers, 32 officers in December, we've consistently been able to save 50% in overtime and a lot of those resources have been used. You know, it's an old facility. Many of you have been there. We are constantly just patching. I've had to change in the last four months, five, five-ton units, because we need to provide air conditioning to the inmates. If not, again, you know, they'll take me to court that their constitutional rights were violated, you know, and that type of thing. So, you know, these are the things that we constantly face. I understand, I've been on your side of the House, I understand the budget process and it's not easy. But, you know, I hope you also understand where I come from as I plead to you this afternoon. So if you have any questions, Senators, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Senator, have you had, did you participate in the preparation of the 9+3 from your department?
You know, I'm pretty surprised when I saw that, because I tell you right now, based upon our actuals, we're hurting. We're hurting. So, that's why when I was talking to Bill back there and I said, "Bill, where'd those numbers come from?" Because, you know, they're new to me.
Because we're working from what was reported to us from each of the departments through BBMR and the numbers that we got show that of the 35, of the 27 million that we appropriated for you this year, they're reporting that you're not going to spend 1.7.
I think BBMR could probably explain it because...
But we're showing that we could possibly be as high as 3.8.
Speaker, maybe we, you know, we all need to sit down and discuss the numbers, because I tell you, when I go with my ASO and we're having to do budget modifications to move money around because of shortfalls in one category to the other, I mean, you know, I think we need to come to an agreement on this because obviously, as I said, I was quite surprised myself with those numbers, because in actuality, I don't see a surplus coming out of DOC for this fiscal year. And then we also have to remember too, with our pharmacist, our medical clinic, a good portion of it last year was funded through DOI Compact Impact Funds. So now, those funds have since been exhausted and so now we have to take it out of the general fund to pay DOC, uh, GMH.
Okay. Now, I'm just, I'm just saying, when we saw the 9+3, which we hadn't seen in the past...
And I think...
We're showing that their report shows that you're going to be not spending 1.7 and our projections, as we went through it, showed that there's a possibility there could be as much as 3.9 unspent from this year's appropriation levels.
Okay, so...
And that would cover all the 3.5 that you're asking for, which means everything that you wanted was already there. You just needed the cash from somewhere else that wasn't us. The appropriation level was provided from us. You just need to get the cash.
Well, if there's money somewhere to be had, I mean, I'll go look for it, but, you know, based on the books that I'm looking at, at DOC, again, we'll work with BBMR and see where the funding levels are.
Thank you. Chief?
Hufaday, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to speak, but I would like to refer to my director and then I'll reserve my own comments for right after he's done. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker and all, you know, your colleagues up here. I just wanted to, you know, to mention that, you know, as we speak here today, our guys are up there right now manning the borders and right now we're manning the borders with, we're talking about almost 60% decrease in manpower from, you know, during the 1990s. Today, we're seeing challenging amount of contraband coming through the borders. Our officers are doing their best to seize all, you know, all these drugs, but as my counterpart here from DOC would always give me a call, "Mr. Jim, can we get our canine dogs to come to DOC to do some sweeps?" DOE for the past six months has been contacting us to have our dogs go over there and do sweeps. The scary thing about this is that every sweep that's being conducted at DOE, there's always a hit. Either three or four people are, you know, there's alerts. This is scary, because, you know, that's our most precious commodity, is the school children out there and if the people working around them, you know, are involved in drug trafficking or the usage of dangerous drugs, this is something we need to look at and concentrate on, because we know that everything is being imported through the borders. So that's why I come here before you guys, to make sure that we're not left status quo or caught, you know, in any way. We need to invest on the borders. You need to give us the tools so that we can counter these culprits that are using smart technology to sneak in drugs, counterfeit currency. You've seen it in the papers. They're being confiscated out there on mom-and-pop stores. We're still trying to find out where, where in the heck is it coming from? You know, I come from a law enforcement field, you know, I retired and I have a passion for the borders and I feel for our brothers and sisters in blues like GPD, doing a good job with the Mandanya Task Force out there. We're ground zero when it comes to drugs out there. And, you know, I plead to you guys, please give us the tools. Like I told these, you know, my colleagues here in Customs, I said, "What happened? What have we done in the past? We didn't do our homework. We need to get smart technology. We need to have advanced manifests. We need to hire more people, because we need to protect the public out there." Just take a look at the newspaper, every time you, or, you know, the news, there's always somebody getting arrested. My guys, every day, they come to me, "Sir, we arrested three people, four people." So, you know, I plead to you guys, we're ground zero for all contrabands. It will lessen the burden on all these other agencies at DOC, especially the guys in blue here. It's gonna be a domino effect if we don't man the borders properly. So that's, that's, that's all I wanted to say here today, you know. We don't, we don't wanna, we can't afford to have status quo or even to lessen our budget by, you know, a couple hundred thousand and I agree with Mr. Speaker here, you know, when we were down here years ago, he warned us. Is that all you wanna raise your service fee to? And look at where, it's true, we're suffering today, because we didn't, we didn't pre-plan, we didn't forecast the increase of tourism and visitors and along with that is increase of contraband. So I'll go ahead and let my new chief here, let you guys know about, you know, the other challenges and what, you know, what we can do to, you know, better serve our people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Director. Congratulations, Chief, on your new promotion.
Thank you, sir. Hufaday, thank you, Mr. Speaker, once again for allowing me the opportunity to provide a little talk coming from, from me. My name is Vincent Esen Perez. I am a 28-year career customs officer with Guam Customs and Quarantine. So pretty much, I've grown up in the agency. I was a detector dog handler for a few years. I was in Internal Affairs. I was at the borders. I've seen the challenges. I've seen the frustration that our officers are facing. Not only do they have to deal with the lack of computerized management information system, but we do all of this, you have to develop a skill. And I'm not really going to talk about all of that, because we're here for the budget. But I do want to reemphasize that I do represent the classified service in customs. And as I settle in and I take a look at the budget, right, you're looking at the line item that says $253,821 is actually a small amount in the big scheme of things or even in the scheme of the budget. And it may not seem like much, but when program areas within our agency are not filled and you're looking at a 50-plus percent shortfall in our personnel, there's not enough training, not enough resources, no equipment, we can't even get electronic manifests, as the director has said, it just seems to be a little overwhelming. And as I settle into the position, I've been promoted almost about a month already. And so as I settle in, I started taking a look at all the different areas and tried to prioritize what needs to happen with the agency. So, go back, maybe just yesterday or the day before, you go into the news and you see somebody got arrested for this, arrested for that. If you really take up the underlying reason or what happened, you'll see that there's a tie into possibly narcotics. And narcotics like ICE is not made here in Guam. You need to buy all the precursors. So what does that tell you? We're hearing that there is at least a kilo per day, the rumor is that there's a kilo per day being brought in. So you need to tell me there's no market for ICE? I think there is. So when you take a look at that in the big scheme of things, there's a market here. And in the old days, when you cut off the head of one, basically the organization for that narcotics smuggling ring died with it. But now, we're finding that mom-and-pop operations are starting to pop up all over the place. And so rather than putting money into the effort after it gets to the border with the Mandanya or the Strike Force or with every other entity, I believe that Guam Customs is one of those entities that if utilized the right way, if given the proper amount of resources, training, equipment supplies, personnel, and adequate support, we would kill the snake, the snakes that are existing in the community today. So one, one of the things I like to do is ask, and I know, once again, the $253,000 may not seem like much, but I ask that you reconsider not just funding that amount, but also allowing Guam Customs to take a look at the legislation, to shore up the legislation, to acquire the proper, the necessary operating space that the agency needs to operate, to do the functions that it needs to do, address these little shortfalls like the 3, 4, $5 million in rent that we pay annually. There are certain things that we, of course, we may have to live with, but the thing is, I don't believe that we've given the effort enough attention. So I would like to see if we can address some of these issues to give us a little bit more autonomy, to allow us to address the issues of retention and pay, to address the legislation, to shore up and articulate the border authority. Because right now, it seems like the Guam Customs is not the authority, we're more like a tenant. So I wanna flip that around. And so one of the things that we need to do is address our fees, which is through the passenger inspection fee, which is based on what our operations need to operate, so we base it on a cost. And all we're doing is that we're basing our fee on a cost. We don't rely on the general fund per se. Pretty much what we're doing is that any, any part of our operations is either funded through the airport passenger inspection fee or the freight inspection fee. And there are times when we have to come to the legislature to request for an appropriation to offset the shortfall, because we don't make enough in one program area or the other. So, as I, like I said, as I settle in, I'm starting to notice these little things and I'm hoping that before too much longer, I'm able to correct a lot of the deficiencies and address the issues head-on and hopefully reduce this scourge of ICE that is impacting not just my family, your family, but the community as a whole. And I remember in the 90s, in the, or actually in the late 80s, I was warned as a detector dog handler by somebody who used to work in Hawaii, that said, "You gotta watch out, Vince. Hawaii's already knee-deep in ICE." And we're like, "What, what is ICE?" Fast forward to today, everybody knows what ICE is. As a matter of fact, the price of four, per ounce is actually gone down to some extent. And we are there with our brothers in blue. We are there with the Strike Force. We're there with the Mandanya. People don't realize it or people don't understand that Guam Customs is not a federal, we're not a federal entity like CBP. People look at us, they say, "You mean, tell me you're not Customs and Border Protection?" No. We are funded locally at the state level. And so a lot of the times, people think that we get paid a lot. We do, what it is, is that we do our job because we want to make a difference, but we see a lot of times that our officers, when they get the opportunity to get more money working for the federal government for doing practically the same thing, I would be remiss if I say, "Hey, you know what? You need to go and do that." Heck, I almost left, but I stayed because I felt like I need to serve the people of Guam. I need to make sure that the people of Guam are protected from this scourge. I mean, if that's the only thing I can do is to protect the people from the ICE, I will do it. But I don't want to belabor the point. So, what I like to do is, is just provide written testimony so I can shore up what my testimony is here today. But just to reiterate, I'd like to address, to request the legislature to allow us the measly $253,000, but also to help us increase our funding, because we have the mechanism, we don't rely on the general fund, but just give us the opportunity to correct these deficiencies by addressing it through the correction of our fees. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald, unless I'm mistaken, you don't need authority from us to increase your fees. You come back to us to approve it, but to increase it is your responsibility to, you come up with this...
Yes, yes, and, and, but, you know, sometimes the fastest way to get from point A to point B is in a straight line. We are, we are bound by the AAA process. And so one of the things that we find is that, one of our shortfalls with the agency is that we do not adjust the fees annually. And technically, if you follow the law, based on our operating costs, every year, somebody's supposed to come to me and say, "Hey, Vince, you guys are tracking $1 million short." So if I'm a million dollar short, I start getting all my group together and I put out a notice and I say, "Hey, Mr. Carrier, Mr. Airport Authority, we are going to look at revisiting the fee and we're looking at increasing it by 30 cents based on..." And remember that this is all just cost recovery. So, we accept the responsibility for not being able to regularly and periodically adjust the rates, because what we've been doing in the past...
Yes, but please get that straight.
Yes, sir.
That it is not this body that is supposed to authorize you to do it. You do it and you come to us.
Yes, sir.
And then when you come to us and I tell you, "Is it high enough?"
Yes, sir.
Quit slapping me down and saying, "No."
Yeah.
Because the last time we went through that, I kept telling you, the number that you had before that we're recommending, stay with it and you guys reduced it. And so I, I'm just saying, you know, as my staff says, it's...
Yes, sir. I was not the chief of customs at the time, but I do realize...
It's your fortune that you're gonna live long enough to be proven correct. And again, on this one...
But I thank you for pointing that out. And so one of the things I like to just say is that we don't have an entity within the agency that is, is, their sole job is to look at the rate and start doing these things. What we do is we take a bunch of our officers who have some technical knowledge on rudimentary skills with budgeting and they say, we get them in together in a room and so the institutional knowledge kind of dissipates, because they're not, their role is not to keep doing that. But we are going to take a look to find out what the mechanisms are and what the support functions that are needed to be able to ensure that every year, we do that. And if we can, we'll fix it, then we go a long way to fixing a lot of our issues.
Please. And so that is yours. And then the other issue that you brought up, the being a tenant, everybody's heard me hollering and screaming about that, that's...
That's a different one. That's a different war, sir.
You should have had, that's executive. That's all on that side of the street. I can't be legislating your leases from here, or the decision to lease. Those were all bad decisions that were made by your predecessors. And please, don't come laying it on our doorstep, because it's not ours.
We're trying to fix the internal mechanisms, and hopefully, address the other issues as they come along. But our biggest thing is our finance. But thank you, sir. I appreciate the input.
Thank you very much. Does anybody want to speak from EPA? I thought I had a name in... Walter had signed up, but go ahead. Anybody, if you're going to speak, comes...
Mr. Speaker, members of the Guam Legislature, thank you for this opportunity to come before you to speak a little bit about the recycling revolving fund. I took a look at the budget, and as I understand it, the fund and its, pretty much, the bulk of the fund will go to the mayor's council for operations. Now, I'm not a director. I'm just simply Conchita. I'm just an employee of the Guam EPA. And I just need to understand, perhaps, what it is the legislature would like us to do with respect to some of the duties and responsibilities that the law requires us to perform. And one of the things is the stimulus law. The RFP was tapped by then-Senator Rory Respecho to use to provide to recycling facilities to assist in the removal of recyclable materials off island. With the budget as it is right now, there will be no funds to provide as a stimulus. There will be no funds available for the removal of junk vehicles, white goods, and other recyclables. And if that is the decision of the Guam Legislature, then so be it, and change the law, so Guam EPA is not responsible. And the recycling companies don't come to us and say, "Here's the law, here's the certifications, here's what you need to pay out." So, if you're asking, "How much do we pay out?" Now, mind you, we just started paying out since April of 2016, because the law was enacted last year in March. And we spend over, we estimate between $1.3 to $1.5 million each year. If you don't want us to do that, okay. So, change the law, so we don't have to do that. And if you don't want us to do, to try to work on the Beverage Container Recycling Act, because we actually worked on regulations, we got the OPA on our back, saying, "You can't spend the RFP. You need to come up with a plan. You need to come up with regulations." We did. It was kicked back in January by the legislature, because we didn't follow the rules. Okay, we get it. We've been working with legal counsel to get it out. We met, our administrator met with Adlib, saying, "Can you just hold off and not use..." We know how to, we have the projects that we know need to be funded. The mayor's council is another one. You know, because they are our grassroots, they're first responders, if you will, with respect to their respective jurisdictions in getting junk vehicles, batteries, waste oil, and metals out of their villages. So, we were trying to allocate some funding for that. If that's not going to be done, then let us know, because I know that the mayor's council always gets, and I say, "We're not helping them with their jurisdictions." That's all. That's really what it comes down to. Tell us... Oh, there was another thing that I noticed, that they cut out the salary of our one person. Now, mind you, Guam, yeah, they did. Our recycling officer was not in there. So, I know, Mr. Speaker, I, you know, I was talking to your staff, I said, "Maybe that's an oversight, okay? You know, maybe we can try to work something out." But, mind you, Guam EPA's budget, we're primarily funded through U.S. EPA. We don't have many people on the general fund.
That 400 was left in there for the three of you, or however many of you are on board. And maybe you can assist myself and the OPA in explaining the transfer out of $2.02 million from your recycling fund last fiscal year.
Right, for 2016? I can't. I can only tell, because I'm not a, I don't have the authority to move funds. I can only tell you that by April of 2016, when Senator Respecho's law came into effect, we had to pay out. And that's a liability, that, you know, Guam EPA, it doesn't matter. You need to make sure that when a recycling company comes with their manifest, their bill of lading, we are obligated to pay. So, that law is still in effect until the regulations are enacted, and we're close. We are close. But if it is the will of this legislature...
Nobody is trying to change the will, the manding.
Okay.
Just get to us what the $2.02 was spent for, because in the audit, it only reads, "Transfer out."
Okay. I understand. For the $400,000, I believe you asked about, an RFP was announced. It is going through the review process. It's been a long haul, because we've had, you know, the Office of the Attorney General's Office is working with us. There is a committee, and they're reviewing the proposals. That fund, that amount is encumbered for a contract. That is not going to any salaries at all, or any collection programs. It is for the zero-waste implementation of the Zero Waste Plan, and outreach and education. And the law is very specific that it is to be used for contractual services to a private company.
Okay. No, we just need to get that clarified in the audit of where that was transferred out from, and what it was spent for.
Okay.
Because it's just a parenthesis. And so, if I can get a better report on that audit of what it is, then it'll be reinstated. But right now, it's just showing you're collecting $2.9, and money's going out, but no explanation of what it's for.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So, we'll address it.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
All right. Anybody else? Anyone have any questions or comments, or anybody that's still here? No?
Good afternoon, Director Lamorena. I just wanted to go over the 9+3 Excel spreadsheet for the BBMR submitted to this body. And if we look at the remaining $1.756 balance, and you say that you're not sure why that's showing a surplus of $1.756, but if in actuality it does, I am hoping that you will greatly consider to pay out the overtime of 205 officers, that at an annual rate, you pay 10%. The government pays 10% for this unreceived overtime, because of the civil case action that was done back in 2010. So, if there is a surplus, and if this is right and true, I would like for you to move forward and pay off these overtime officers.
Sure, Senator. Since I've been here, I mean, I've paid off almost all our civil service commission debt. I've paid off almost all our other...
No, I understand, but we're talking about 205 officers.
Right. And then, you know, I mentioned during our budget hearing that if funding is available, we'll pay it. There's no doubt about it.
Okay, very good.
But I just don't see where the money's coming from, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, it shows here that there will be. So, if there is by the end of the year, I'd hope you'd consider that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Speaker, I just have a question for Customs. Has there been renegotiation in place to negotiate your rental with the airport? Because I honestly believe you're required by law to be there, and you're paying, what, over $5 million? Or how much are you paying to the airport?
Well, if we're renegotiating, are you aware of anything? But are you aware of any negotiation already about to take place with the rental?
The reason why, Chief, I'm very concerned, is because you're identifying a shortfall. You're required to be at the airport, you're required to be down at the port.
Yes, sir.
You're required to pay, to be where you need to be to do your jobs. And it's quite obvious that your rental payment is quite high. I think somebody told me it was like $5 million for airport?
We're hearing that it's one of the highest, I think there was an auditor's report that says that we pay the lion's share.
You pay the lion's share?
So, these are things that we can renegotiate, but it actually, if you go back to when the law came out, it did not disallow for the rental. And the rent is considered a cost to the agency. So, the agency calculates that into its passenger fee, and comes out with a number. One of the things I'd like to reiterate is that the U.S. Customs and Border Protection, by law, are allowed to operate at the ports of entry at no cost. I don't, I have the CFR, but I don't have it right on me right now, but I could provide that later.
Well, maybe, Chief, maybe that's what you may want to present to your oversight chairs, that try to mirror that effect?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Senators Sinagustin. I am very well aware, and we are working together.
Okay, but I'm just throwing that at the chief, because I haven't heard about it, about you presenting that.
Yeah, we're working to...
We had an informational briefing earlier this year to clarify all these things.
I mean, we want to collaborate and work through these issues, and, you know, we'll get there eventually. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for all of you who have testified today. I was wondering if BBMR, I was hoping DOA would be here, but BBMR, if you could also help us. In your testimony, you talked about the revenues, and that an upward adjustment is warranted. If you could please just give us a little bit more on that, and then tell me what this Section 2718 fund revenue, you said it was 5.2, but actual collections are only $1 million as of July. So, are we over-appropriating? I mean, over-predicting that one? But you want an upward... Could you explain these two paragraphs, please? Yes?
Sure. Thank you, my speaker. Going back to my testimony, I began by stating that it is our desire to work with the members of the legislature to first come up with a funding level that we think is appropriate, after all the concerns that have been voiced today, we'll address. And I'm sure that this representation is only, you know, a small percentage of governmental operations, because not everybody was here today. So, the speaker, and again, I do recognize his desire to be fiscally responsible, as I recognize that is what all of you would like to do. But there are some opportunities, I think, for us to revisit the general fund revenue projections.
Do you believe there's an opportunity to revisit the part, it's my understanding, part of the revenues were reduced, the projections were reduced because of the Section 30, a different Section 30 expectation based on the war claims?
Yeah.
Do you have any objection to that reduction?
As a matter of fact, I don't think the ship has proverbially sailed with respect to that, because I know that the Congresswoman is continuing to say that she's going to find the alternate funding source. There was some recent correspondence, and I'm not a lawyer, but I think the Department of Interior's recent correspondence was to basically say, for the record, "That's not what I said, Congresswoman. I'm not, you're giving a literal interpretation of federal law." And so, it remains to be seen what it is that we get for Section 30. I will report to this body that we did, I think about two weeks ago, a week ago, put in our annual request for Section 30, and that amount that we requested was $78 million. So, we're consistent in our belief that we should be getting what it is that's due to us, that the ship hasn't sailed with respect to how the war claims, in my humble opinion, should be paid. I don't disagree that it should be paid, but I just don't think that Section 30 is appropriate. So, yes, I think our revenue projection in January was $74 million. We did the prerequisite reconciliation with the Department of Revenue Taxation, in collaboration with the Department of Interior, and we arrived at a $78 million number. So, that's the request. So, that is the number we'd like to stay with.
$78 million?
Yes.
Versus the $68 million in the bill currently?
Yeah, and I perfectly understand where, you know, the speaker stands in that position.
Do you think, there's also provision in this bill, and maybe Mr. Camacho can also help us, Rev and Tax, if the, that says, if we receive more than this amount in war claims, I mean, I'm sorry, in Section 30, so that amount, whatever the excess amount over $68 million, would go towards tax refunds, the provision for tax refunds? And so, would you amend any of that? Do you think that that would be $10 million, or maybe $10 million based on your estimates? Mr. Carlson, yeah, you may, and then I'll ask.
Yeah, please. Again, we agreed on the $125 million provision for tax refunds. So, we don't disagree on that, set aside from the general fund revenues. So, we would ask the body to consider, if we think we agreed on $125 million being appropriate, then if the number is above $68 million, then that should go to some of the concerns that are being, you know, raised here with the fact that, you know, we have limited resources.
All right.
So, I would think that we should, again, reconvene and discuss these types of provisions, because if we believe we've adequately set aside the $125 million from current-year revenues to pay for current-year tax refunds, then I think, you know, we can move on, and then maybe look at other general fund revenue sources that are contained in the substitute bill, that have some significant differences from what it is that not only was contained in the executive budget request, but as the speaker was alluding to with respect to GBB, that there are some current reports that substantiate, like the TAF number. So, you know, we do have tracking mechanisms and data.
I understand. I'm just, yeah, for right now, trying to concentrate on this Section 30 versus tax refunds. So, Mr. Camacho, if you could weigh in on that. The bill proposes that if we receive any more than what's allocated right now for Section 30 revenues, that that would go towards the provision of tax refunds. Potentially $10 million, if Mr. Carlson's prediction is correct, or...
Well, basically, first, to begin with, the $125 basically is sufficient enough, basically, to cover the provisions for refunds. I think that's something that we talked about with the fiscal policy team. So, I think, going back to the Section 30, I think what Lester's saying, that we asked for that $78 million, I think the question is really, what's really the breaking point, basically, or the 2014, I believe, the threshold, whether it's for the fiscal year, or during the fiscal year. I think that's one of the questions that we're really looking at.
So, you're also sticking with $125 in the provision for tax refunds. Is that consistent with your estimated, what would be owed for this, for 2016?
Yes, yes, that's basically what we're looking at, $125 million for the provision.
Would that be less than was actually paid in... Would that be less than was actually paid in the prior three years?
Well, I guess when you start comparing what's actually paid and what's actually due for the year, we basically just look at the tax year in itself. For example, we're looking at, for next year, we're looking at tax year 2016. So, when we look at, based on tax year, we normally will only be paying out refunds about 138, 140 million dollars every year. It's the carryover of the error returns and suspended returns that makes the difference moving forward. In other words, we normally maintain, you know, an average of 10 million suspended or error returns every year. So, it's just like a carryover those, it takes years to sometimes basically resolve those issues. So, it's just, you build up the errors suspended, it goes up, it goes down, but it's always at an average of like 8, 10 million dollars there.
Do you think that that provision in this proposed bill that allocates any extra income from the Section 30 towards provision of tax refunds would speed up the tax refund process?
Basically, I would defer that question to Lester, in other words.
Mr. Carlson, do you have an answer? I mean, we also are just looking at this, right? And so, we're just trying to get, I don't know if we're going to be able to sit down again, so I'm trying to get as much information as possible today.
If we had the additional resources to be able to allocate to governmental operations and the additional Section 30, I think we'd be able to cover both bases. We would fund some of the agreeable shortfalls, and I think there'll be something left over with the upward adjustments because it's not limited to Section 30.
When do you predict we will know the number that, the amount that we will be receiving for Section 30?
It's ordinarily the first or second week of September.
September. What would you recommend we do in the budget if we don't know whether it's higher or lower?
Again, I'd like to talk about, you know, with this group, you know, about other areas of general fund revenue.
All right.
And I think that it would be incumbent on us to go down the line of each one of these revenue sources and have an open, frank discussion with the Speaker and his Office of Finance and Budget on where we might make some good faith and solid projections on general fund revenue.
Did you see the projection for the Healthy Future Fund seems to have increased?
Yes, I did. And again, I have no qualms whatsoever with what the Speaker is utilizing for special fund projections in FY '18. When Mr. Denite was here, you know, and the Speaker referred to the special funds report, I showed it to him, he was, you know, we're good.
So, you agree with the special funds projections?
Yes.
And the general fund projections, except for the Section 30 part? It's the TAF that...
No, there's a couple of other items that we'd like to be able to sit down and discuss in the general fund category, yes.
Oh, in the general fund, okay.
Yes, yes.
All right. And do either of you have input as to the biennial versus annual? I know you said you want to talk about 2018 and then 2019, but we're faced with a bill right now that's projecting for two years. Are you objecting to a two-year proposal, or are you in agreement with that?
I think that we have a few hurdles that collectively this body should take into account, as well as, you know, some input from, of course, you know, Adaloupe. I think that if we come to a better consensus on what it is that we're going to be utilizing for '18 and that we can use it as a solid base for '19, then maybe there will be some consensus. But I don't think that, while the planning purposes part, I'm 100% behind that. I think when the Speaker was talking about how people would understand, if I remember correctly, the horizon for '19, I thought that was a great analogy. And I think that some of the other concerns that he brought up about all of us collectively being here, like in November, you know, in our respective offices, putting stuff together for submission in January, it takes a lot of effort. It really does take a lot of effort. So, to the extent that we can all agree on first, being able to get our arms around '18, I don't even think we should even talk about '19. But then again, I do believe that this body is willing to engage in that discussion, and we welcome it.
Mr. Camacho, did you have any input on that?
Please, the Chief.
Just because it is your, the collections that we are relying on.
Basically, when you look at revenues, and maybe I can just bring this up again, it's really, we're really unsure what the Trump administration wants to do with the tax cut moving forward. You know, it's, if it's going to happen, we're going to be looking at rates that are a lot lower. If you look at the, you know, if you're looking at '19, you know, corporate rates are going to be lower. I believe they're looking at reducing it down to as low as 20%. And when you look at the rates right now, they go as high as 39%. So, there's going to be some tax effect if we don't do anything on the tax commission, whether we want to delink or not, or do something to, you know, look at the revenues. So, that's something that we might have to consider if something goes down on, because we mirror the internal revenue code. And if there's changes in the rates, those are actually going to affect almost everything, even Section 30, because they're based on withholding tax.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you all for your candid answers. I know, me as a first-time senator, it's, I appreciate the opportunity to interact. I think it's important for this process. It's one of the things about an annual versus biannual budget that I prefer, so that we will be guaranteed an interaction and guaranteed that all the agencies will feel accountable and that we also, you know, can be guaranteed to be apprised of progress, guaranteed to, you know, get our questions answered. And I know that there are many provisions in this proposed budget and prior budgets that have reporting requirements and audit requirements. And I just, I just think that, I wish Mr. Sangin was still here because my research is very, came up with very similar results as his, that many of the states have stuck with or went back to annual budgets because of the ability to just really hold people more accountable, the transparency when, you know, there's the process that's in place, that's been in place for many, many years to just have that conversation, as you say. And so, that's the only thing. And particularly, yeah, I feel like that's, that's what I'm doing here, is trying to do that. And I don't want to lessen my ability to do that, or the people of Guam's ability to hear. Sometimes this is the first time they hear these things is because a senator asks the question, so the public gets to hear it. There's not many, you know, public forums for the different agencies to discuss these things. And it would, so I just, I appreciate that opportunity for, in an annual, on an annual basis, at least. I was suggesting to the Speaker that we increase that type of opportunity, you know, and when the quarterly reports come in, we get opportunities to discuss what, especially right after the budget, right? Right after the budget's passed, we're going to know about the Section 30. We're going to know some of the other things that we're kind of guessing at when we pass this budget in August. But thank you again. Thank you all for, we hear your concerns about your different agencies, and I know we have to also address those, so. Sidoosma.
Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much for all of you for being here. You know, I appreciate the discussions we're having and the kind of tone that I see from the administration in reference to at least being able to say, "Hey, we're here, we're going to work together to try to work this out." The only, you know, I think one thing in my mind that I'm not really seeing clearly is that, one is that we have a statutory, statutorily set date when we have to pass this budget, which is end of this month, is end of August. And there are unknowns, you know, even before that, you know? And we understand that the Section 30 sometime in September is when we would know, Lester, when the actual amount that we receive later on in the year is when we'll be able to actually see that the tracking, you know, to see what, you know, what's coming in. And from there, even though there's a provision here that allows the administration to come forward in April, that's after the second quarter, to come in and make that call whether we're going to revise the revenues for 2018 and whether we're going to do anything for 2019, right? And so, I guess what is not clear to me is that if we take this budget that we have now, knowing that we have a deadline to pass this budget, which is August, the end of August, is that something we're able to work with? And I hear you, you know, talk about we're going to sit down together, and I like that. I like that kind of, that tone, that we're going to sit together and make determinations on how to move forward. But we have a timeline that we're up against. So, you know, I don't know when we're going to sit down again. I think a session is scheduled sometime soon, next week, I believe, for this substitute version. And so, you know, where, you know, what's the, what's that, you know, I don't know. I think, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, session is being called for sometime next week. So, what happens? Are we able to take this, you know, and say we're going to pass it and come back even before the second quarter ends and make those determinations? Lester?
Yeah, thank you, Senator Rodriguez. I had no idea that what we were presented with a week ago would be fast-tracked and heard with maybe just this public hearing and not the opportunity to maybe, you know, work with the committee particularly on fine-tuning some of the provisions that are contained. With respect to the statutory requirement of August 31st, you know, I understand why that was there. I understand that some of the uncertainty with the Section 30 amount, you know, it would be to everybody's benefit to have some clarity. And pushing everything back because we don't, if history holds and Section 30 does come in second week, it really is pushing the process, you know, that much closer to the end of the fiscal year, beginning of the next fiscal year. But that being said, I do think that some of what it is that we have, you know, before us should be, you know, discussed a little bit further. I think, what do we have, about 12 agencies maybe, the most represented, you know? That certainly isn't the majority, and I'm not here to speak on behalf of anybody in particular, or BBMR specifically, yes, but, you know, funding requirements for the entirety of the government, certainly. And I just think we need to take some more time to think about what it is that, you know, might be the subject of a legislative session.
Okay, because, you know, my concern is that as we look at this, and I believe, it's my understanding that you also appreciate the, this substitute budget that the Speaker had presented us being conservative, right? And so, that's something that I understand and I hear coming from you, I think, which we all agree on. So, you know, really, and you talk about there's some room in the revenue where, that's where we need to talk about, right? And see where, and one of it is not knowing until after August 31st, right, is the Section 30. The other is, you say, on the business privilege, on GRT. That's another area. Can you explain a little bit more on how and where in GRT you're looking at? That's where we can take a look at adjusting this number that is reflected here?
Well, you know, a conversation occurred with one of the OFB management persons and myself a little while ago, and we agree that GRT is, BPT is growing, we just don't agree on how much. We agree there's growth in the government, as evidenced by, you know, the substitute bill that's here today. We just don't agree on how much growth. And I think when there was an analogy that was utilized, I think by the Speaker today, on a 5% number, and you thought it was more prudent to go with a 1% number, you know, that kind of fiscal responsibility and conservatism, you know, I can appreciate. What I would like to, you know, get you guys comfortable with the fact is, I think we do have the ability to work with an increased amount for appropriation, both from the general fund side and what we've already seen, as evidenced by, I believe our figures show an overall increase in special fund revenues to the tune of about $24 million. That's about right? So, you know, we have healthy future funds, we have TAF, we have these trackings that, you know, are very, we're all very comfortable with, right? And so, to the extent that the general fund growth may not be something that immediately is conceded to be at the level of the executive budget request, I just think that, you know, we've only had one opportunity to respond, and this is it. And I think we should just take some time and go line by line on the general fund sources and, you know, get comfortable. And committee of the whole, sometimes there's, there's just not that comfort, you know, because really, you know, we're here and you're there, and, I mean, we're looking up at you guys, and we're on TV, and, you know, it's just a little bit more daunting than it is if we had a roundtable or if we had some other type of discussion where we could bring out, as I have my staff, you know, the Speaker could have his OFB staff. I know his OFB staff, they're very, very professional, very versed individuals. And I think that the process would benefit from that because I think as policymakers and as department heads, you know, we have, you know, our marching orders, our goals and our desires, but there needs to be, you know, interwoven with all of that, you know, the big global view. And if we can get there collectively, that's where I suggest we do. So, BPT, we're going to disagree, but there are other levels of, you know, that I think really warrant discussion.
That's all, or just one, you know, the one that really interests me is when I saw the presentation from OFB, at least for me, and you're right, you have very good people there. And so, the one that really interests me is the 9+3 report. That's where I know that your, Mr. Tai Ting Fung has said that that's something that needs to be refined further, right? And so, how, you know, how soon can we get a much more refined reporting on that 9+3 report?
As, you know, again, I think my staff and the OFB staff, you know, we can get together very, very soon so that, you know, when we have something that's put up on the screen and there are numbers about the little footnotes and the other explanations that Mr. Tai Ting Fung was able to provide. And then, you know, similarly with Director Lamarena, former Senator Lamarena, you know, there are some projections that maybe, you know, over time, maybe as of today is projecting to lapse, but in the overall thing, the scheme, after we do some more transfers, maybe those lapses will start to dissipate. So, these are the kind of things where as we see this, and then we look at departmental activities, therein lies the footnotes that we'd like to bring to your attention so that you don't just gravitate, you know, to this $9 million number, because there are some areas, you know, specific to each agency that we should probably... some areas, you know, specific to each agency that we should probably, you know, discuss and not just utilize that as a single source of information for what it is that you are, you know, receiving as far as a rollover budget.
Okay. That's all I have for you, Les. Just, just one thing for the OPA. You, and we did speak with the OPA about the level of what you, what this substitute version is calling for, which is one, the rollover, right, which is 1.3, but your actual is about 1.5. And the way you're able to accommodate that for this fiscal year and the fiscal year before, was that you're able to use the lapses?
Yes.
Right? And so with this substitute version, that's a practice that's ending. We heard the university speak about wanting to have that as well. But is that something that if you, if you were able to carry over, was that something that the OPA will be able to live with?
Yes, we've always asked for lapses in our budget requests. We didn't get it last year, so yes, that would definitely help, absolutely.
And so it'll help you to be able to cover what is needed for 18?
Yes. We have some operational lapses from FY 16 that we'll cover for this year. It's just FY 18 and 19 that we're not too sure how we're going to cover those laps, those shortfalls.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Unlike the court and the legislature, or maybe you are like the court and the legislature, when he releases the money and you get, when BBMR releases the allotment, do you get the actual cash at the OPAs?
We get operational allotment, yes, from DOA directly.
But do you guys keep your own separate checking account or is everything-
Yes, we do.
And so there is actual money, cash in your checking account-
Yes.
-separate from, so if we were to give you continuing wing, it wouldn't be pulling on 18 cash, like the rest of the departments? It's all, it's all in general fund? You guys have a completely separate-
Checking account, yes.
Or does the, and your checks are written by the, by your Department of Administration?
We write our own checks. So we pay our own bills, DOA gives us the monthly allotments, and then we deposit it into our account, and then we pay our own bills.
Okay. So you have, you have an amount there that you can use?
That we'd like to use, yes.
The other thing is, was there a new Gatsby rule that was implemented this last year on the reporting of income tax?
The abatement?
Well-
Disclosure?
Yeah, in 15, you just had income tax, and it just had a whole number running across. This year, you broke it down into three, individual, corporate, and withholding.
I believe-
Is there a new rule that required that?
Not a new rule, but just the preference of how DOA would want to present it. So we also had in there the tax, the provision for tax refunds was also deducted and not netted, just to be more transparent.
And so that the listening audience understands, if they were to ever go on the website and look at the audit, the, there's a huge deficit or in the, in the individual, I mean, in the individual income tax.
Yes.
But if you take the variance that you have at the end there and add it on to your provision, it would be almost equal to the ACTC, the 20 million that they're getting in ACTC in ref, I mean, an ACTC refund. If added to the 125, would get to the 145, which is sufficient to pay for all the taxes.
I, I need to look at the numbers, but I see, I know where you're coming from, yeah.
That, that individual includes the ACTC, but it doesn't include the return, the refund to you, I mean, to the government of Guam. So that's where the additional amount is coming from, that, how they're able to make that payment. Because if you look at it, it's, it's drastic drop. And so is, so is our report. I mean, our recommendation is substantially lower than the governor's request, but it's because we're now using your reporting requirement of how much is actual income, income, individual income tax, and letting the ACTC be in the, in the provision.
Right.
So, anyway. Thank you, everybody, and I think, oh, you, Senator Espadón, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Chichinova, again, just to make clear, the Speaker was just asking about, you had mentioned that if you could, if there was language in this budget bill to allow you to use your lapses, that that would help see you through next fiscal year.
Yes.
And so the line of questioning that the chairman and Speaker were, was going down is that the lapses are actually real cash, and you said, yes. I just want to make that very clear, just so that I understand that.
For this year and for FY 18, yes. We're mostly concerned with FY 19, that we really won't have enough. But we do have some operational lapses that we would like to use to cover this year and next year.
And it's actual cash in the bank, in your own account?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing, and more of a generalized question, that the public auditor herself stated that what the government really needs to do, I think it was a two-pronged approach, and one of the prongs was to reduce spending. Now, can you cite areas in which you could recommend that this government can look at and where we could reduce spending? I mean, after hearing all the testimony from the agencies themselves and the needs and the growing needs going forward, right, how can we as legislators reconcile the two concepts? On one hand, the agencies on the front lines really have needs. You just heard-
Yes.
Customs and Quarantines, they're operating at 50% below what they really require. You hear from Department of Public Safety, the Police Department, they have growing needs, as well as Department of Corrections. And I'm sure all the agencies who are requesting for a little bit more, right, have a justifiable need. And so I guess I'd come back to the OPA then to say, well then, how or where should we look to cut down and reduce our spending?
I think when we say to cut back on spending, we mean generally over the government in general. When we look at the different agencies here that have been expressing their concerns about needing more money to do things, that's where our office, we can, we do audits to look at efficiency and effectiveness. Perhaps there's some operational issues within the different agencies where they can probably be more efficient in their management of how they do things, or they could be doing things that are not necessary, that may be costing money. So we really have to take a look at the individual agencies, and part of doing that, one of our goals is to do these types of audits, but we need the people to also, we need our staff auditors to be, we need the capacity, we need the training, which, which we do, we have the training. It's just really the bodies in the office that we need, so we can do more of these types of audits to identify those areas where we can, we can be more efficient in our operations.
Okay. And I appreciate that answer, because this body, this branch of government constantly gets under attack, right, for not reducing spending. And I'm just trying to figure out, well then, knowing what we hear from the various agencies and there's needs, it's like, well, what do we cut it? How can we cut when their needs are growing?
Yeah.
And so if you're now talking about it's more of an in-house efficiency issue, this isn't really something we can legislate. It's more something internal that maybe your office or the office of the public auditor can assist the various agencies to try to identify where those efficiencies can be met, but it's not necessarily that can be passed by a statute.
Yeah, it's our mandate, actually, to look at, to do audits on efficiency. So it's well within our means.
And I just wanted to make that, at least say it or articulate that, because like I said, there's a lot of people think, out in the public, who think that all we have to do is pass a law and that's what's going to happen, when really, the real mechanism to reduce our spending is really internal to the agencies and with the assistance of perhaps the public auditor and others who might be able to assist. But it's not something that we can pass into law and say, well, let's cut them all by 10%, 20% over there, and then we all of a sudden are operating at $100 million less, because we know from the testimony that that may not be the practical solution. Is that a fair statement?
But we also want to emphasize that agencies shouldn't depend on the auditor to come and do that work for them. As much as possible, we want like the management of these agencies to be responsible for the efficiencies of their departments as well. We can, we come in, usually audits are after the fact type of things that happen, where we can look on things that have already happened, but if management would take a more proactive role and immediately start identifying maybe areas that they could be inefficient at through a study, or maybe having assigned somebody in their departments to really look at their operations, because they understand it the best.
Right. And I appreciate that answer as well. I understand that, because it is upon the management level to take a look at their own operations and say, how can I run this a lot more efficiently, a lot more, and still remain effective-
Effective.
-if not more effective in what we do. But I just wanted to enter into this little bit of a conversation, because like I said, there's constant pressure on this body, right, to reduce spending. But if the spending is really in the efficiency of the agency, then it's incumbent upon the agency and all the agencies to look within themselves to try to understand that.
Yes.
Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, I believe so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I will thank all of you and for coming this afternoon and providing testimony. We stand adjourned.